At four thirty, I called a meeting to order, the budget meeting. Um, if you would mind to stand and do a pledge of allegiance. It was leading to the flag of the United States and there is but into the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hey. Uh. Are you here a motion to adopt tonight's agenda for this question?
To adopt tonight's agenda for budget business.
Any comments or questions by the board? Paul and Phader? Me opposed. Motion carried. Maybe an executive session on budget discussions off and on during these proceedings. Because of personnel matters pertaining to the book. Okay?
Uh, okay, so in your packets, you would, you should have the first draft of the, um, proposed general government, first draft of the proposed highway. Uh, the proposed library budget and the proposed, um, fire department budgets. Um, I don't think I could give you a copy of the shared department of yours, but I can tell you what they are. Um, since Chief Kerber is here with some of his team, I would, if the board doesn't mind, we could give him the floor to discuss his report for you.
Excuse me, oh, now we know where they want Mark down the hall. There, because we have just got the library with us, the, then Aaron give us some to?
Yeah, that's one. Thanks.
How many did people have? I had a two.
No, we're all talking about. Sorry, thank you.
Hey, let's go through it, Aaron, you got the floor.
Um, you just have the whole, or you have a different, you have a new line?
Right, yeah, uh.
Right at the top, uh, workman's comp, I do not have V L C twos, uh, numbers, so not a percent of those are locked in tight. Uh, but there's an increase in that line for nine hundred dollars for workman's comp in the state of New York. Uh, we found out in the last month and a half that our current provider does not cover us in the state of New York for workman's comp. Um, so thankfully with the myself and my assistants working to help the town manager, we were able to procure workman's comp insurance coverage for us. Um, for the year was eight hundred and change. Of course, that'll go through December of next year, and then, of course, it'll probably increase that following. So nine hundred dollars is a placeholder for that. Uh, next one down is appropriation, or sorry, the, another one, the next one down that has increased is the annual banquet. Is adding six hundred dollars to that line to go to twenty five hundred dollars for the annual banquet as well as, so dinner, as well as stuff we get the guys for their service for the year, whatnot, uh, our awards and such. Um, the big sticker on the operational budget is the length of service award.
Hang on a second.
Yep.
Okay, sorry, Aaron, you're zipping right down, I want to make sure we.
Yeah. Anytime you want a question and on any lines, just stop me at any point.
Length of service award, twenty thousand dollars.
Twenty thousand dollars, so what that do, that line would do is to be able to get us to set up a program where firefighters that have served for a minimum of three, five years would be eligible to get a retirement type payment of some sort after their time with the fire department. Um, Castleton's been running one for pushing twenty years now, they're running a program that they define uh, benefit fund, so after three years of being a firefighter, volunteer firefighter in Castleton, they start putting a retirement of twenty five dollars a month to you for every year of service you do to the fire department, um, along these cert.
Press up twenty five.
So the fund pays those, the people.
The taxpayers put twenty five.
Nope, so the, the, actually, what we do, this is to put money into a retirement program to pay back the volunteers when they retire after their years of service. The program pays out based on your length of service with the department and being eligible by being an active volunteer firefighter. Um, this is giving same as the retirement program that employees pay into is at the end of their retire, or when they retire and are eligible, they collect so much. Um, twenty thousand dollars is kind of a baseline to get started. Um, Castle is paying thirty four thousand dollars a year right now towards their program. And it's, after ten years of service, you get a check from that program that they're paying to of two hundred and fifty dollars a month for your ten years of service to the community.
For the rest of their lives.
I'm sure there's some stipulations to it as to how it.
So something that, just keep explaining, keep explaining, please.
This is to start the program for people that we're trying to recruit and somewhat retain at this point. This program's set up that, you know, if you were a volunteer for ten years of the Town and Polley Fire Department, that you would, after you retire and you become of the age the program starts paying, you start getting that twenty five dollar check, that hundred dollar check, whatever it ends up being based on how much money we can put into the program and how much investment comes back on the money that we put into the program.
How much do you think this?
This would be an annual thing.
Uh, twenty, so it's gonna accrue.
It's gonna accrue, and there's a chance that it has to.
It could accrue for twenty years.
Yep.
Before you even touch it.
So the minimum would be, of course, we'd have to have our first, everyone have to become eligible, so right now we start the program fresh. I've been on twenty one years, these gentlemen have been with us ten, whatever years. Starts fresh when we implement this program, no one's eligible, eligible to even invest, or to be vested in this program until they've done another three years. And then from there on, it builds towards that point when one of us retire at retirement age, this fund starts paying back for your years of service.
I'd like to know before we act on that line.
I can get more.
We even have for pensions in our, how much our pensions, we put into our pensions for our people that are here being paid every year.
So this is a tool for us to help recruit, because as everyone knows here, people aren't jumping out.
One, one big leap in one line item, that just.
So the gentleman I've spoke to in brief about this, he says, if you don't start with even this amount of money, he said, don't bother with the program. He said, because you're wasting your time and the time of the volunteers because they're not going to get, they're going to get ten dollars a month. That's, you know, you're not even going to buy, by the time in ten years somebody retires, they're not going to be able to buy themselves and their wife dinner every month for the ten years of service they did for the community type deal. Um.
Not saying, not being a downer on this, but.
Yeah.
That's just, that's a hell of a hit right off the bat, just.
You just hit us right between the eyes on this.
That's, that's quite.
It's been one that I've had in the, trying to get everything else straightened out, but this, I think of program that needs to be really heavily thought of because we offer nothing else to the volunteers right now for their service.
All right, continue.
Um, due subs meetings, a five hundred dollar increase to subscription to N F P A for their standards, um, as we made you aware a while ago, OSHA is starting to tie N F P A standards into uh, our safety stuff, so we would like to be able to have, um, the ability to get into their stuff and read it over.
Where's that line in here?
Would be due sub meetings.
Four, five down?
I didn't, forty.
Down here. Okay, dues and some means, thank you. Okay, that's five hundred increase?
Yes. Next one down is our tools and trainings, the two thousand dollar increase there so that we can attend the V F A, go to the V F A Vermont Fire Academy annually with our guys to do a live burn training there. Um, so it's a full day of actual burning inside of a non-combustible burn building.
I've done it for years.
To see those guys through that, um, we had been catching it every three to four to five years. Every time we do get there with all of our people, everyone's, this is so much more. And we do stuff every Tuesday night, we do stuff on weekends, but being able to go there and put all the application steps into what you've learned for the year, just bring it all together for them, so we'd like to be able to get that every year. Then, uh, the communications line, eighteen hundred dollar increase is to cover data service plans, the apparatus, there's actually tablets, they're in this room right now. To go in the trucks with their, um, Washington County dispatch, they have a software program, I am responded, that tracks as incident, um, descriptions on it and mapping as well. All the information we can upload to those devices to have those trucks, so they, you know, we can see where the trucks are, what they're doing, um.
We have that now.
We have, yes.
But this is just, is this for licensing?
No, it's just, so this is for data plans for like cell phones, but it'll be for the tablets on the trucks. So we have that information all, you know, the ready every time those trucks move.
So this is gonna, this eighteen hundred is gonna increase it to the tablets and stuff that you don't have now.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. Then, uh, communications, just a contractual increase to five hundred dollars for Washington County for our dispatching. Way down, lower than that, other, um, other contracted services, a two thousand dollar increase to help cover the cost of annual hose testing. So over the last three years now, we've been getting to the point where we've been getting our hose tested annually, slatters tested annually, and we're trying to get, keep our pumps tested annually. All three of those are crucial for our I S O rating for the public protection classification for the insurance rating for the whole town, um, and doing them annually is what makes them count. Otherwise, if we do it every other year or something like that, they don't count towards that rating.
Aaron, what's the alert mean?
Alerting is the Washington, uh, Washington County Dispatch.
The Washington County.
Yep. Equipment repairs shows a twenty five hundred dollar increase, it's covered some tire replacement that's scheduled for next year. And of course, nothing is getting cheaper to fix these days. Um, the tires alone will probably eat the most of that up. Next one down is equipment replacement, that buys all of our turnout gear, hoses and such like that, the increases to match what we've been seeing for increases on all of those products, twenty five hundred dollars. The other big piece, minus the, uh, length of service award, property insurance, I'm just going to come back to talk to you guys later tonight. Um, I did some research with that workman's comp, we found out the workman's comp issue through doing research on a different pop, uh, insurance for both the firehouse and the trucks. What we like to do, and it's budgeted for next year, is to be able to ensure our trucks at an agreed valuation of the trucks. Right now with Vermont, uh, these are cities and towns, we're paying insurance on the trucks at a modified actual cash value. So if we get into a wreck with the, one of our trucks, God forbid, they come in with their people, look over the truck and say, here, this is what the truck's worth, if we total the truck, this is what the truck's worth, here's your check.
But don't we have that anyway?
So we have that currently, what we want to do is go to a, at agreed value, um, insurance policy for those trucks. So like the new one we were talking is a million dollars, we want to ensure the one that we'd be replacing at a million dollars. So if we wreck that truck, God forbid, and it gets totaled, they write us a check for a million doll, up to a million dollars for that.
Insurance companies do that?
Yes, yes, yes.
For a whole million, you could have it for five years and they won't take depreciation off that? That's something I gotta see in black and white before I agree to this. I need to see that in black and white.
Um, so right now the truck we're looking to replace, everywhere you look online is sixty thousand dollars to buy it used.
Yeah.
So if we total that truck, everyone knows where they're going to look, there's no N A D, uh, blue book value on fire trucks, they go to the market and say, you could buy that replacement for sixty thousand dollars. Meanwhile, yeah, that's all you're buying is just another used piece of truck, whereas with that actual group, agreed value, know that truck's replacement is a new truck at a million dollars, they pay up to that million dollars towards that new truck. So, and it's black and white.
I, I need to see that, but also another question on that, Aaron.
Yep.
That I can't believe, but that's all right, I don't need to see that in black and white.
Yep.
If that's sixteen thousand and it goes up five thousand in the budget.
It's eleven currently, it goes up to sixteen.
Goes up to sixteen.
Yep.
Which is an increase of five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
What's that going to be next year, there's, they don't just give you a million dollars, how much is this going to go up each year comp on that, if the following years are going to be nineteen thousand, a year after be twenty three thousand?
I can ask that question now.
Uh, we need to know that.
West Brooklyn. West Brooklyn Fire's been on this program for, I want to say it's probably quite a few years now, I can ask them to see what this rates have increased over the years on that number.
I just find it hard to believe. I don't mean to be a downer, but I, in, in, in today's world, I know my truck out there is seventy one thousand dollars. I'm not getting seventy one thousand dollars for that truck.
Not even.
It just doesn't happen.
Yep, hundred percent.
That, that I need to, also the increase on that, because that could be a barn burner, no pun intended.
Right.
When the next year it goes up to twenty three thousand dollars.
Yep. On top of that, it would be the, um, insurance for the firehouse building itself as well as the contents and our portable equipment. Um, and, and that number is definitely a better number towards the favoritism of the fire, uh, the volunteers. Um, within that program, the program that we've looked at is Vermont, or sorry, Vermont, is, uh, V F I S, it's a fire insurance that was developed fifty plus years ago that found a niche that fire, volunteer firefighters needed, so inside of that program is coverage for eyeglasses, for personal equipment that's in the firehouse, if there's, something happens inside the firehouse, if I left my sweatshirt there and it caught on fire tonight, V L C T, if I could show them it was in there, would not pay me for it, because it's mine, not the town's. This program would pay for that stuff. If you came to the firehouse as a volunteer firefighter during a call and your glasses fell off your locker or fell off on your way in and got smashed, I call the insurance agent, they're going to write you a check for your new glasses. Our current insurance program does not do that. Um, if we have an incident with our personal vehicles responding to the firehouse, we've had that happen. Um, take a windshield out, that's what's happened before. Our current insurance company, no, we don't insure that vehicle or the operator. This program would cover the deductible of whatever, whatever the deductible is of the person's personal policy. So it's not insuring their vehicle, but they would write him a check, her a check, for the deductible of whatever damage was done to their vehicle. So that sides the agreed value on the apparatus, which I'm gung ho for because we have an issue issue with the trucks, I want to come down here and say, hey, not only did we wreck the truck, but they're going to give us, you know, a quarter of what it's going to cost to replace it. I'd like to be able to tell my guys, you know, stuff happens, but at least we can cover you and it's not going to cost you money on your part to try and help the community, so. Um, but I can bring more of that black and white.
We need, we need to see.
I'll have it for the meeting tonight, so it's something I, I really would like to talk to all of you about, looking to try and switch sooner than Ju- June or July first. As the coverage is a significant difference for not only the town, for the apparatus and the firehouse, but for my.
Oh, so you're looking to even switch over to this pretty much A S A P even before, and it isn't in the budget.
It would not be, it would have, it would be an overage unfortunately, um, but.
Not funny with money.
Yes, I, the value. You, uh, you perked up pretty quick when I said that I can insure my trucks for what they're worth though, so I think it's worth a good conversation to have at that, so. Um, with the length of service award, of course, and the insurance thing, there's a thirty percent increase, it's a thirty eight thousand three hundred dollar increase on the general bu, general operational budget. The other portion would be the truck replacement fund, and we all know we're short. Um, I just put it out there, I want to go to a hundred and fifty thousand this year, I know I've been, said we want to step over the next few years, but we're behind the steps. Um, not only from our end of it, but the marketplace is keeping us way behind step.
I got a black eye. Thirty percent.
Almost point seven, thirty eight.
Thirty eight?
Well, just over thirty percent.
Okay. It's a lot of food for fodder right there.
Any questions, bring, bring, we'll get answers.
Yeah, well, we'd like, I would like to know about your insurance.
Yep.
And need to find our twenty thousand for length of service, that's kind of hard, we got hit hard last year with, with the, uh.
So I'm just going to throw it back up.
Rescue squad.
They're paying their staff, I'm, I'm not, I'm not going to be nice, I'm not going to be around bushes, they're paying their staff.
That was I'm saying.
I am not paying my staff at all, the town is not paying our staff minus the appropriation, which is nothing. We offer nothing to the ladies and gentlemen of the fire department for their continued service, so that's why it's up there this time, and that's why I come asking every time I do, and unfortunately it is for money. But that's all I can offer is that better gear and maybe, maybe a little piece of pie at the end of there.
And also your line on here for the equipment replacement.
It's on the last page. Or, like, the last page.
Oh, there it is, oh, I see, I'm sorry.
It's hard to do, but yeah, I like this spreadsheet way, so, no.
Well, it sounds like you've been spending too much time with your insurance.
So thankfully enough time that you pointed out that we weren't covered in the state of New York, because we actually had, um.
Yeah, that's.
We found out paperwork wise that we weren't covered, the same time there was a, a department, um, in Rockland County
Yeah.
that was in the state of New York and found out the hard way, um, they actually had to jump through hoops to get their person covered. For insurance, otherwise they were right out the window.
That's interesting, because they, being a border, they come over here all the time.
There's no issue there by the sounds of it, it sounds like we, when we go to play in New York, New York's insurance is different enough that our company that, uh, V L C T, um, holds our coverage with, does not do business in New York, so can't even say, yeah, you're covered, they don't, so.
So the total increase in this, with your truck replacement fund.
Seventy three hundred.
How much?
Seventy three thousand, three hundred dollars.
That's total, seventy three thousand three hundred dollars.
Yep.
Increase in the budget.
Can you get more from Castleton, I'm just curious on their.
I can still there.
Their, their, sort of retirement, their.
Theirs pays out a defined benefit, so there's a couple of different ways we can do it, either defined contribution or defined benefit, they're, they are on a defined benefit plan, they have to make sure they're paying enough into that fund to get that twenty five dollars a month or however it breaks out, their guys. There's other places that's defined contribution, I think that's what I'm envisioning maybe more for us, because we can say, look, that's all we're going to pay is twenty thousand dollars into the fund. Um, you guys take that twenty thousand dollars we get a year, maximize it to the amount you can, and when you accrue your points and your retirement and you're eligible, you just get a long check from that, that is your fair share of the pie for that, what you, what the service you were there for.
I think I'd like to just see it per year wise, like if it's, you're saying, it doesn't count for your twenty one years, but if, it says if it starts it, like, what does it do, like? So, like, let's say, Andrew gets brought up, okay, after ten years, after five years, is there a stepping stone that says what, what they get, how much put in, I mean, just like any retirement system.
Free ride.
Right.
It's not like you've been here five years, you get this.
Right.
Money goes into an accruing benefit package, and you have to perform to receive that, so, um, this year, let's say, I was away a lot, we vacationed, I didn't make this many calls, I didn't make this many training hours, then you're not eligible to get that money put into your account that year.
Who keeps track of all that, you?
Company that ran through.
They keep track of how.
Of what he was going to do.
We had put that, we put that information into them, yes, that would be us.
Okay, so like, hey, we'll do that.
No, it's regulated, I mean, it's, it is, you know, monitored. Uh, so it's, it's, like I say, it's not a free thing, but the twenty five is the starting. Uh, so like, for conversation sake, next year, it may not be twenty thousand, it may be six thousand. Depends how many people are eligible for the benefit. And if it, if we incur more members as a result.
That could fluctuate.
Yeah, we would have to, of course, adjust that, uh, to accommodate, so.
Do you have an ideal staffing level?
Yeah, forty, uh, so.
Forty?
I, when we were at forty to forty five, it was, those were good days, um, at the twenty three we're at now, nights are okay, days are not great, at that forty level we were at when I first started, my first ten, fifteen, ten years, ten, my first ten years. Um, when we were at forty, forty five, even the daytime was decent because you had enough mix of people that worked at night, swing shift or otherwise, um. But right now, with twenty three, it's a very slim number of people that work nights and are available during the day. Um, the shift is Andrew R C, uh, thankfully, thankfully, uh, Bill Jones took a position just recently that takes him away from the fire academy in Pittsburgh, he'll actually be working from his house, so now he's, once he becomes established in his job and is able to, would be able to possibly help out in the time now, too. So, and then there's colored.
Yeah, he was there the other day, somewhere by my house on that house fire.
Yep, yeah, so there's, there's some people that are still working nights, we're just trying to find a way to incorporate them into all the stuff we do.
Well, let me be honest with you, it's a lot to swallow.
I understand that, like I said, the only thing I can do is say, you know, fortunately, the twenty thousand is the only, the twenty thousand plus the six hundred dollars for, uh, the annual banquet are the only parts of that that are actually for the volunteers, the rest is operational part of having a fire department.
Plus thirty five thousand increase into your, you know, bringing it up to a hundred and fifty thousand. But you do know the reason why we didn't increase that and increase it, is because people were so underpaid and we had to cut other places.
I understand that.
To increase salaries for road crews and people like that that were just
Yep.
weren't staying here.
Yep.
And we're still not there. But that's, we're not picking on the fire department, we're thinking of the whole, the whole town.
Yep.
And the fire apartments included, in some years we get, you get what you ask for, in some years you don't.
I just asked for it and, just as I said, unfortunately, I have to appear and stand up for the people that work for me that don't get paid, so I don't.
We just need more information.
And information more, you need, I'll get what I can already, I want to come back for the meeting tonight anyway to talk more about that insurance stuff, maybe your activity reports and stuff, so.
Yeah, that twenty thousand, I'd like to see what that is. I'd like to really see what that is.
Yes.
And the insurance and that's just very hard for me to believe that offered, I need to see that and then get an idea of what that's going to increase year after year, and they wouldn't have that if Rockland City has it. You can see pretty much how theirs is going to increase.
Yep.
Or has increased.
From the insurance engine, it sounds like it does not just.
Yeah, well, yeah.
It follows the same insurance stuff, if everyone else goes up, well, we're going to.
That's the thing that goes up the most every year.
Yeah.
What goes up?
But I will call, I'll call their chief and say, hey, what have you seen, are they, are they drastically different than everyone else, or do they follow the curve there?
Okay, yeah, that's, we just need information.
Yep.
Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you. I don't need to approach myself, but wow. Just need to, need to know, okay, onward, what else, Paul?
So I'm still, um, waiting, uh, I think I told the board at our last meeting that V L C T um, usually sends me a breakdown of our insurance rates by department. Um, this year they apparently changed their software, so they're trying figure that out, so I still don't know insurance for fire department, highway department. Um, I think I might put some guesses in the general government proposed budget. Um. And I did. Um, I talked to the board about um. In executive session last week about um computer upgrades. And I could finalize that, so. Um. Once the board uh the board approves that contract. I'd like to start building up um. The I T support over the next couple of years um. So that we. Don't have a hit on the budget in the first year. Uh, because it's gonna cost. Uh, it's gonna cost about fifteen thousand dollars a year. Um, for the computer. Uh, the I T support in the in the um. The security um for the for the.
Security software?
Yeah.
So like, is that when they do all the updates and they make sure that you're second?
Yeah, so I don't want to be. This year, I'm hoping we can allocate ARPA funds to pay a year in advance so that. Uh, next year, if the budget passes, I'm gonna step up that I T support.
Line item.
Um, it's under bookkeeping. Under I T.
Okay, I got it. I got it. Yeah.
Um.
That's gonna go from maybe four hundred to fifteen thousand.
Yeah, well, currently, we we've got a couple of different lines for I T. Um, we've got one line in the town clerk's office. For computer stuff, and we've got one line here. In the um under bookkeeping. I'm gonna try to, like I said, so we don't have to be like, oh, sixteen thousand. Um.
Yeah. Like a shock.
Right.
Like you just got.
And with the file.
The other uh on the first page, the other big number is. Auditing services. That service keeps going up. Um. And uh, that our current auditor. Um, I'm not, I'm not sure how much longer we're gonna stay without auditing firm and. You'll see where I've gone from eleven five to twenty thousand. Twenty twenty plus is pretty much every other um auditing. Companies that that we've inquired on that that's what they're gonna start charging us. So I'd like to start um. You know, this year, we're we we have the same auditor, but we seem to be getting less and less service. From the auditor. Um, yeah, that's. Seems to be ever since COVID. Um, they used to come down here and do all their own network and now it's. Now they just send a huge list to Nisha and say.
Yeah.
This is what we want. Um.
Yeah, we got time to do that, huh?
No.
Yeah.
Um. Some of these, some of these other numbers are general. Increases in in salaries. Um. Yeah, see, you'll see on page two hundred town office, town website. In software fifty five, I bumped that to sixty five. Um. Yeah, everything's going up. What the. The sheriff's department, um, they sent me their proposed figures. One of nine percent increase. Um. I do have in here the the numbers. Uh, the numbers that Aaron just went over. I have put those in here, just so the board knows. If would you incorporate Aaron's proposed numbers? You know, and you throw it into the mix.
That would be under uh. What's that?
If underneath the part of.
Yeah, it's on page top, page three.
Page three. Uh, uh. Where the hell is it? Oh. Okay, I'm blind tonight. Sorry, guys. Yes, I got it. Yep.
I've also um incorporated. The library's proposed budget. Um, in that, in this mix as well, just so the board knows. If the if everyone gets what they're asking for, that's what. That's what the bottom line is gonna be. Um. Health insurance has gone up significantly. Um. We did, we. It doesn't look, if you look on page four, under employee benefits. Um.
Awesome.
Doesn't look like it's, you know, when I say significantly. I've only proposed a six thousand dollar increase. And I I think part of that is we had um. We had a couple. Uh, we had at least one um person that has health insurance. Did the town change plans? So um. But the premiums, health insurance premiums went up twenty four percent roughly. Um.
That is, that is, just that's just crazy. And then. I keep my car mates to my scent.
And then un- under others, you'll see the um insurance bond. Again, that's a guess, waiting for V L C to to get me those numbers. Um. I know it's a lot of numbers to look at, but.
Yeah.
You also see, you'll notice that many of the numbers haven't changed.
Rescue Squad hasn't submitted a budget?
They have not submitted a budget. They have not indicated whether or not they're gonna ask for more money.
Uh, what about Little League? Did we?
I asked them for an accounting. I haven't heard back from them yet.
We need it for the next meeting. The board needs that for the next meeting. Same thing with the uh, but we'll just put it out there to them. We need it. And same thing for the rescue squad. If they have any idea at all, if not. It's gonna stay where it is.
Well, I mean. I, you know, I'm.
Are you asking all these people? Are you just asking? Are you asking all these people? Are you just asking?
Well, right now, we've we've never seen, we've gotten, we have received budgets. From people that we've asked for throughout the years, so we kind of understand their budgeting process. But the Little League, we don't, we've never received anything for twenty five hundred. It would be nice to know where it goes.
I mean, if you're asking like, am I asking the town ban? What's your accounting? No, I haven't.
That's I'm just asking, because I know it's gonna be, but that we're asking Little League, are we asking everybody that we? Give the money to?
Eventually, we.
Why? We never did.
Eventually, we get to everybody.
I mean, most of the so, most of the um. And social service um. Uh. Entities that we allocate to, and you'll see in the town report, they send us a report. Sometimes they send us their budgets. Um, and sometimes for limited space, I can't put it all in the town report, but. You know, under health and welfare, most of those entities. Like neighbor works, uh Red Cross, et cetera. Uh, visiting nurses, they always send me a report and. They tell us, these are how many people, um, I mean, if you were at the town for, you know. Um. But, I mean. I don't know if the board is suggesting or telling me I want a budget from everybody. I mean, I'm I'm sinking as it is, so.
No, no.
Think so.
No, we've gotten budgets from. People throughout the years so that we don't bury Paul with this. This year, we'll go with Little League. We've been asked by some people that have come to our board meetings. To ask for the Little League budget, so we'll ask for that one. I mean, these people are taxpayers and they're coming to the board and asking us.
Yes.
Yeah, that's just, that's why. So we'll try and get the Little League and they get the rescue squad and. I can bring the budget from. That we have just approved for the senior center, so you can see what our budget is there for. Because you give money to the senior center every year.
Mm hmm.
And I'll bring that the next meeting. So that the board can see the senior center's budget.
It's in the town office, so we have that already.
But that's, I just thought, nobody's seen that budget.
It's in the, yeah.
Yeah, it's in the, it's in the town.
I just want to make sure that we don't do one and not have some.
Yeah, we've been, we've been asking people off and on.
Good. I was, I wasn't privy to that. Sounds good.
So Paul, the medical budget has not changed. You want me to pass that?
Yeah, I know. I talked to her this morning. I think she has hopes that someday she'll have someone to help her.
Nice of you.
So. No, I haven't. I haven't changed that at all. I mean, this is like, these, these is, I mean, some of these numbers are gonna change. Um, maybe. But I think I got a general. General um sense of this, this point.
We do have to discuss. Salaries. I want to do that in executive session. Your salary, your salary, a road crew salaries. I want to do that in executive session.
And my salary.
And your salary?
Yeah.
It went up last year, year before. That's something we need to discuss. Where's Sarah's line in here?
Um, we're not budgeting for her this year. She's.
It's been fun running, guys.
So you had a good year?
Did you write yourself a credit? Yes.
Her, uh, where is her number? I think she's near legal. Um, right on the first page, about halfway down the page. Under legal services, it says economic community development.
On the first page? Oh, yeah, it's right there. It's right. See?
And I propose a number. I'm just, just as a starting point. Um. But we can discuss it in executive session if you'd like.
Mm hmm.
The same with the highway department. If you look at the highway budget that I circulated, I propose a starting number. And we can discuss that under executive session. I propose a number for bookkeeping. The the clerk's office um. Gave me their proposal, which I've incorporated into this draft. For the for the clerk and the assistant clerk.
Okay. That's a general government budget.
Yeah, that's the the gist of the general government budget. Um, if you look at the highway, as I as I just stated, the first line. Highway admin, I I propose um some numbers, starting numbers for. Uh. Increases in salary and we can discuss.
Very much better.
We can discuss those in executive session. Um. Under summer construction. Based on. The numbers that I'm seeing as far as what we spent in the past couple of years and what we spent so far. I propose some increases to the um chloride. Um. I've proposed some increases to the culverts and probably last year, you remember. I'd love to make that the culverts even more, but.
Yeah.
At least we're starting to break away from like, you know, three thousand, four thousand, five thousand.
Yeah. Yeah, that sometimes it's gotta come up. That's hurt us.
I propose a small increase in repaving and I'm open to. A conversation of people thinking Joel weighing weighing on this. Makes sense to increase that even more.
Of need.
We've gone, yeah, over the last couple of years, we've gone one twelve. One fifteen. I've got one twenty in there. Again, it's just a placeholder. Um. Although I think paving has been. Remained fairly steady. You don't get a, you don't get a lot for hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
No.
Did we get any monies for that?
Huh?
We get any monies for paving?
We've applied for plastic paving grants. We. We received one when we did Thrall Road, I think. Um.
And doesn't that go over three years or something like that on?
Frankly, I've I've tried to understand the formula the state uses and I can't quite grasp. Because to me, it looks like. I I I'm just maybe talking, just conjecturing, but to me, it looks like. It's based on the amount of last two roads you have. And your budget amounts. To me, this looks like, I don't know. What do you guys think?
You and Joel discuss calling the guy together one time to try to get an explanation from him.
Yeah, we're gonna do a little conference.
I I've talked on.
Time as well, too. So minimums and training and stuff, I've ever talked about that.
I've talked on Patty McBoys, tried to talk on in the past. Um.
Does that come under transportation money from the state? Is that what that comes under or no?
Yes, paving grants.
Paving grants.
Yeah. We have been more successful because I think less towns go after the structures grants. So we've been fairly. Successful, I I think anyways, with structures grants, which is like culverts. Um, big culverts usually. Um. The the one thing I wanted to pull the board on is. As you may remember. We've had some. Significant bridge projects. Um. And I think when I started, we were doing a a bridge. Construction and bridge repair fund. I think it was like fifty five hundred maybe.
Yeah, it wasn't very much.
When I saw, when I started.
Hmm.
Um. And we've, I've gotten, or the voters have approved the sixty thousand, an increase of sixty thousand. Um, I'm suggesting we back off uh and drop it. Uh, just to. Make the bottom line number a little bit more palatable.
So you go from sixty to forty on that one?
The and the reason why is because um. While we while we had to pay engineering costs on the Thrall or the Thrall Road Bridge. This, the um.
Thirty one?
No, the Thrall Road Bridge. We ended up not having to contribute. The town didn't have to contribute towards the construction costs. Um, the town will not have any expenditures on the thirty one bridge. Um, that's gonna be covered entirely by the state. So, you know, when I started panicking, whatever, how many years ago, that we didn't have enough money for the bridges. We've been fortunate enough that. The last project and the next proj- bridge project that we didn't have to spend. Much money as we would have had to spend.
Those are our big ones.
Yeah.
Those are the big ones. And Route thirty of the bridge is a state bridge, correct? By my house?
I think so, yeah.
So the town isn't liable for.
Though. I don't know.
Maybe.
They're maintaining it.
They do maintain it. Wh- whether, I don't know whether it means.
We need to find out if we're liable for that. Or anything on that. The abutments. They're not in good shape. But.
Talking about the London Benecini Center?
Well, it's surrounded by a state route, so. It's surround, being that it's surrounded, it starts at a state route. And on the other side of the bridge is a state route. I mean, that would lead me to believe that it's.
It it will leave.
Where they, they dropped their plow and they go.
They certainly dropped the plow right there.
Yeah.
I'd like to know for sure if we're. If we don't have any liability on that bridge. Because if we do, we got a plan for the future.
They are doing all the maintenance on it. You know, the sweeping, the washing, the.
Oh, they.
The crack.
They cut it out here a couple, few years back, eight maybe. I don't know if you were even the town manager yet. They took it right down to the berms.
Yeah.
To the beams and.
They did.
And redid the concrete. Uh, there's, I just want to make sure we're not liable. Before, so that we can, we don't get shot nothing. And.
What we have in this?
Um, I don't know. I'd have to, I can get that report to you guys um tomorrow.
Yeah, because that might be a uh.
Um. You know, I've only, I've knocked it from sixty to forty in this proposal. Um, but I'll find out what we have in there.
If it is, can we maybe move that line item, that twenty thousand up on top of that hundred and twenty thousand for repaving?
I I mean, potentially. The only reason why I dropped twenty off is. To keep the.
The button line down.
The but the.
Yeah.
The total increase down.
Yeah.
But we can experiment with it, see what it looks like. Um. So. I've also proposed. Um. Last fiscal year, we budgeted a hundred and five thousand for equipment replacement fund. I proposed bumping it up to one twenty five. I proposed bumping it up to one twenty-five. It just, it seems like.
Always something.
It's, it's, it seems like we're always. We're never, we're never building a reserve because, because something always breaks that we have to use that fund for. Um.
It's always gotten to me, um, I know we're being recorded, but, or. We have a hundred and fifty thousand a year for equipment replacement fund for the fire department.
That's what's proposed.
That's what's, that's what's proposed, uh. If that goes through, we're still. Not replacing our town equipment that's used, you know, pretty much.
Really?
Yeah. A lot, and we haven't got that even. Up to where the fire department's equipment replacement fund is. That's, that's a little bit out, out of, out of line.
Yeah.
It's actually a lot of what. But, but, we can discuss it.
And I mean, I, I can, I can put different numbers in there and we can show you what the result is.
Yeah.
Um. I've mainly just kind of put, where I, where I know we're, we're completely. In a deficit, I've plugged a number in there to kind of draw attention to, here's a number that we need to. Seriously consider.
We've worked really hard to bump up salaries. Couple of years.
And I think we're, I think we're, we're in a good, I think we're in a good space there, um.
So then maybe we can concentrate on that a little, yeah.
Oh, there's, there's, we'll talk about that in executive session.
I know, that's what we worked hard on, though, that was our big goal for.
That was our big goal, that's what I was explaining to Aaron, that's why we didn't do that, because we needed to.
Right.
Get our road crew up and other people up in salary. We're getting close, but we're still not there. All right. Um, does anybody got any questions? I'd like to. Our, our board meeting is gonna start at six o'clock tonight, correct?
Yes.
I'd like to go into executive session before that. And discuss salaries quickly as of, uh, potential, you know, salaries.
Right.
I'd like to spend time looking them over for the discussion, too.
Mm-hmm, I just won't, you know, just.
Right.
This is the first run, so. So I don't know how we're going to word this to go into executive session correctly. But, uh, we need to go in for personnel matters pertaining to the budget. So are we wording that correctly?
Motion to one V S N section three thirteen A one, make a motion to support fines that premature general public knowledge could place. For a person's all substantial disadvantage if certain matters were. Personnel matters were discussed outside of executive session.
Okay.
Go to one V S A, section three thirteen A one A, make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss personnel matters.
You second it, Cheryl? Any, any comments or questions by the board before we go? All in favor?
Hmm.
Any opposed? Motion carried, we'll go into executive session for personnel issues. And hopefully be out by six o'clock, the start of our meeting, it's five twenty-four now.
Okay, Cheryl, for you made a motion to leave the executive session at five fifty-eight P M. Fowler brought in, seconded it, passed, motion passed, all in favor? Their motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn? I've been seconded, all in favor?